Let me call this meeting to order. It is the January regular scheduled board meeting. It is January 28th, 2016. Determination, we have a quorum. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
Present.
Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Judith Solís.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sáenz.
Present.
And Mr. Ruben Klein.
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia, are present. We do have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance. We do have a lot of our students here. We could have a student leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Section three, approval of minutes. The public hearing, December 8th, 2015. The regular board meeting, December 8th, 2015. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes?
Yes, one more.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Section four, the public forum. Section five, item one, Board Member Recognition Month, January 2016. The theme is superheroes for schools. And I don't, the section is a reading for a proclamation and presentation by our RGC CISD students.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Daniel Garcia, members of the board, Mr. Joel Trigo Jr., superintendent, and audience. The month of January has many notable observances, such as New Year's Day, the setting up of resolutions for a brighter new year, and the observance of School Board Recognition Month. The third statement possesses the most impact. The school board provides the leadership that ensures that our students obtain and keep the skills and education backgrounds to meet their goals. Meeting Students Dream is an integral part of contributions that will ensure a positive impact on our community. Throughout the state of Texas, the recognition of these men and women who serve their communities selflessly is an important part of this month's agenda. At this time, we will begin the presentation with the reading of the proclamation signed by Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas. Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of a child. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And... Whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Rio Grande City CISD School Board and proclaim the month of January 2016 as School Board Recognition Month in Rio Grande City. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. In official recognition whereof, I, Greg Abbott, hereby proclaim this 28th day of January 2016 School Board Recognition Day in Rio Grande City. At this time, we ask that each board member please come forward to receive a certificate issued by Texas Association of School Boards, which reads, "Superheroes for Schools. School Board Recognition Month 2016, honoring our board members for their dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community." As we call your name, please come forward. Mr. Daniel J. Garcia, Board President. Mr. Eduardo Eri Ramírez, Vice President. Ms. Judith Amanda Solís, Board Secretary. Dr. Norberto Cantú Jr., Board Member. Mr. Noé R. González, Board Member. Mr. Rubén Klein, Board Member. Mr. Benito Sáenz, Board Member. Now, we will have a special presentation by our students. Our plan tonight is to show the school board members our appreciation for their dedication and hard work to prepare us to be tomorrow's leaders. We applaud them for their vision and their willingness to accept their responsibility. This year's national theme for the observance of School Board Appreciation Month is superheroes for schools. We all know about superheroes. These characters display and possess extraordinary powers and/or abilities. So in order to visualize and conceptualize what their powers and abilities are, each of our schools will represent a superhero. And what a coincidence, our RGC CISD school board members display some characteristics of the superheroes that will be represented this evening. Take a look. Gruya Elementary represents Captain America. Captain Am... Captain America is the pinnacle of human physical perfection. While not superhuman, he is as strong as any human can be. He can lift a maximum of 800 pounds with supreme effort. Captain America has agility, strength, super speed, and endurance superior to any Olympic athlete who ever competed. Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary represents Wonder Woman. Wonder Woman has super strength, combat strategy, superhuman agility, and a healing factor. She's super intelligent. Her main powers include running at 60 miles per hour, mental and psychic abilities, the ability to fly, and the ability to resist numerous types of magic manipulation. A.C. Elementary represents Hot Girl. Hot Girl displays advanced hand-to-hand combat skills, enhanced strength, and is a weapons expert. Hot Girl owes her powers to a belt. The metal is psycho-reactive, responding to its various thoughts, and in its base form has a number of electromagnetic gravitational properties. General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary represents Iron Man. Iron Man is a genius level intellect that allows him to invent a wide range of sophisticated devices specializing in advanced weapons and armor. Iron Man possesses a wealth of power through his powered armor suit. These powers include super strength, the ability to fly, durability, and a number of weapons. Alto Bonito Elementary represents Flash. Flash possesses super speed, which includes the ability to run and move extremely fast, use superhuman reflexes, and seemingly violate certain laws of physics. Flash can move, think, and react at light speeds, as well as having superhuman endurance that allows him to run incredible distances. Ringo Elementary represents Batgirl. Batgirl's physical powers are superhuman strength, photographic memory, and rhinopathy. Batgirl's physical abilities include investigation, marksmanship, and martial arts. For Batgirl, most of her mental abilities are genius level. J.N.O. Hossa represents Thor. Thor's strength, endurance, and resistance to injury are greater than the vast majority of his superhuman race. He is immune to the conventional disease and highly resistant to injury. Thor is trained in the arts of war, being a super bravely skilled warrior, high proficient in hand-to-hand combat swordsmanship and hammer throwing. North Hammer represents Spider-Man. Spider-Man has superhuman strength, able to lift 10 tons ultimately, and is roughly 15 times more agile than a regular human. The combination of his acrobatic leaps and web-slinging enables him to travel rapidly from place to place. His spider sense provides an early warning, enabling him to, ability to evade most any injury. Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary represents The Hulk. The Hulk possesses an incredible level of superhuman physical ability. His capacity for physical strength is potentially limitless due to the fact that The Hulk's strength increases proportionally with his level of great emotional stress, anger in particular. La Union Elementary represents Starfire. Starfire is designed to constantly absorb ultraviolet radiation. The radiation is then converted to pure energy, allowing her to fly at supersonic speeds. This energy also gives her incredible superhuman strength and durability. So, as you can see, our seven school board members do possess strong similarities to the superheroes we've seen in action-packed movies and in comic strips. But we, the students of RGC CISD, are fortunate enough to have seven of our very own superheroes here, sitting in front of us, live, in person. We thank you for being superheroes for our district and for having admirable traits and abilities unique in your own special way. One last thing, though. Since many superheroes typically wear capes, we decided to present you with the next best thing to a cape. A superhero in particular once said, "With great power comes great responsibility." So when you wear this, you're making a promise to protect this district. May this jacket represent a symbol of the bond between the protector, you, and the protected, us. At this time, some students will present each board member with their own cape. I mean jacket. Thank you so much, everyone. At this time, we will continue with the presentation through our Career and Technology Department. Students from Rio Grande City High School, under the direction of Ms. Adelina Villarreal, students from the Family Consumer Science and instructor, Ms. Lupita Cruz, will present a token of appreciation. Sabrina Salinas, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Sabrina Salinas, and I am in the Family Consumer Science classes at Rio Grande City High School, also known as Homemaking and Culinary Arts. Our instructors are Ms. Lupita Cruz and chef, Mr. Alex Gonzalez. These classes are under the Career and Technology Program. Public education is more than just learning the basics, math, science, English, and history. It is a platform for students to reach their potential. These dedicated volunteers before us reside in our community. They are our friends, neighbors, community leaders, and parents. We know that you all are superheroes that make very important decisions and make student success your priority. We have baked a wonderful dessert for all of you with a lot of care and tenderness. We hope you enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, students. Now, through the After-School Centers on Education Program at Gruya High School, directed by Ms. Adelina Villarreal, students from woodworking class and instructor Alberto Arredondo will have a special presentation. Angelica Rodriguez, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Angelica Rodriguez, and I would, and and I represent the A.C. After-School Center Education at Gruya High School. I would like to share the following information. We benefit every day from hardworking, from hard work and long hours contributed by our trustees. Serving as a crucial link between the community and classrooms, this board is responsible for an annual budget and mil... budget of many millions. Over 10,000 students and over 1,000 employees in 15 school campuses. On behalf of the A.C. program, we would like to take a moment and tell our school board members thanks for caring about us and giving so much back to our community. We want to let them know that we support them and their dedicated services is recognized and truly appreciated. We have hand-built these laundry chairs for you. It took us about two months. Our A.C. instructor of woodworking, Mr. Alberto Arredondo, and the A.C. program is under the direction, and under the direction of Ms. Adelina Villarreal. We hope you will treasure the work for our hands for a long time. Wait, what? We hope, I, we hope you will treasure the work of our, of our hands for a long time. We know that superheroes must also make time for the rest of these, make time for the rest in these outdoor chairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wow, these are awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. These are really, really, really unexpected and very appreciated. They're wonderful, wonderful work, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angelica. To conclude our program, we'd like to invite the audience, along with our superheroes, to some refreshments in the lobby. Thank you for your presence and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trío. On behalf of the Maintenance Department, we'd like to acknowledge school board appreciation and provide you with a small token of appreciation for all that you do for our students, for our community, and for our employees. Again, thank you for all the support that you provide to this department and all departments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Let me say, I just want to share a few, few words with the audience, and let me thank everybody for being here. You know, these, after this presentation, this really, you know, hits home where, you know, this is the, makes, this is what makes it fun to serve on this board. You know, we get to see the products that we, excellent students that we produce from this district, you know, right, right in front of us, and it's, it's great to see them here. And I want to thank all the parents, all the faculty, you know, and all the, our students for, for making our night. I can say that on behalf of the board, that, you know, really, that's really made it our night, and we really appreciate it. And if any of the other board members want to share a few words.
Just, thank you so much. Again, the gifts are extremely creative, well-done. And on behalf of the seven of us, thank you so much for thinking of us. We did this out of the love of our district, obviously, but this was unexpected, and again, thank you so much.
Like the, our, one of our students mentioned, there is some food and snacks in the back. If we can take a 10, 15-minute reset, so we can enjoy some of the snacks. And we'll, we'll do that, and we'll resume them in 15 minutes.
It is 7:20. We'll continue with item two. Consider and take possible action on the trial request forms for Alto Bonito Elementary, Roque Guerra Elementary, Gruya Middle School, Ringo Middle School, Verens Middle School, Gruya High School, and Rio High School. Is there any discussion in item two?
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. On item number two, there's several corrections. I'd like to note that, please. On page three, on letter B, on page three, on letter B, it's, actually, letter B is the Magnet Middle School. It is not Gruya Middle. That's on page three, on the top. On the bottom of that page, on letter C, under Gruya High School, the trip is to San Antonio, not Houston. San Antonio.
Any more discussion, item two? We have a motion on item two?
I want to make a motion, but before I do, I want to make a statement on all these trips. I've had a chance to review every single one of them, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to experience a world outside of our own. What I would like to make sure, and that is, the forms with the information that was turned in, the forms are lacking a lot of information, and some of the information is not accurate. And I would again ask particular principals, since this comes from the schools, for you to look at the applications before you submit it, because I sat down with Mr. Resio to go over this this afternoon, and again, there's almost every single one of those applications or forms that were turned in have information that is not accurate, and that needs to be corrected when it comes to us, so we can approve exactly what, what the trips are supposed to be. Again, that had nothing to do with the trip itself, but it's important that the information be accurate when it's turned in to us. And with that, Mr. President, I move that we approve the trips.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Sáenz? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on request from the Little League Baseball for use of school facilities for registration on February 3rd through the 5th, 2016, the Multi-Purpose Center.
Attached to the request from the Rio Grande City Little League for the use of the MPC at the Fort Ringo for registration of our kids and their district kids for February 3rd through the 5th, and this would be after school. They have the necessary insurance liability and everything covered. We're asking for your approval on this recommendation.
We have a motion on item three?
I saw more.
We have a motion by Mr. Sáenz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on request from Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary to use school facilities to host the fifth annual Autism Walk on April 8th, 2016, George Sanchez Stadium.
A correction on number four. Mr. President, it is the sixth annual, not the fifth annual.
Okay.
With that in mind, we respectfully request the use of the stadium for Friday, April 8th, from 9 o'clock to 11:00, to host the, the event, the sixth annual. We recommend approval.
Do we have a, a motion on item four? We have a motion by Mr. González. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on donations to RGC CISD.
The following are the donations. There are quite a few on this particular month. Would you like me to go over each individual one? Or?
No. We've reviewed them already.
Yes, we have them, and we have reviewed them. Mr. Resio, we can just make sure they get a thank you notice from the district?
They will, they will, sir. We recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on schoolDude.com Incorporated contract renewal.
The school district uses the software for internal job orders, requests from all campuses, all departments. We use it with the Maintenance Department, we use it with technology, we use it with transportation, the business office. We have used it before. There is the amount. We will recommend approval. It's really working good, and it's very accurate and user-friendly, so we recommend approval for the recommendation.
Any discussion, item six? Do we have a motion, item six?
I saw a motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on total image solutions, color copies.
Rio Grande City CID color copiers are charged only for, on a per copy basis, and this is just the use for the color copiers, and this is the amount. We're asking for an approval on the recommendation, sir.
Do we have a motion on item seven?
I saw a motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on proposals from DBR Engineering for the Culinary Arts Classroom as the Rio Grande City High School.
When the Culinary Arts Department classroom was built back in Rio High several years ago, the electrical wiring and outlets were not in compliance and needed some additional work in the kitchen for the equipment by the district for the classrooms. Therefore, some parts and labor need to be done so that we can update it and correct the need, and we're asking, we have two proposals here. One is from Metro, and we wanted from Zetro. Both companies have been involved with the high school. We are recommending that we go with Metro and your approval, so they could get to work on the corrections that we need for the Culinary Arts Classroom.
That was the lowest bid, right?
That is the lowest bid. Yes, sir, it is.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Mr. Alex Gonzalez, now you have your full kitchen. Item nine, consider and take possible action on attorney employment contract with Mr. Marjil Sanchez Jr.
Mr. Rosen, I'm going to suggest that this item be tabled, there's some issues that we need to resolve before we move forward with this item.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table, item nine?
I saw a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis, a second by Mr. Sais. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on RGCC ISD Police Department Communications Radio System.
The Rio Grande City CID Police Department is in need of some equipment and some updates on some software for their 28 analog two-way radios to be converted to digital. The service with the equipment has a cost of $7,099. The system is used throughout the valley, and this is state-approved vendor. We're recommending approval for the request.
And do we have a motion, item 10?
I saw a motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of December 2016.
Presented is the request for approval for the tax refunds for December 2015. The refund is totaled at an amount of $3,446 with 12 cents. Attached is a summary of the refunds on there. We're asking for approval of the refund amount.
Motion, item 11?
I saw a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 13, I'm sorry, item 12, consider and take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
We have approximately 40 that are listed there, and you have the attachments on them. They're all been checked, they're all vendor-approved, so any questions on any particular one? We recommend approval on them.
Discussion, item 12?
I saw a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Resio. Item 13, consider and take possible action on request for permission to open new position, Assistant Principal Gruia Middle School.
Evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board. On item 13, respectfully ask permission to open this additional position at Gruia Middle for Assistant Principal. Staff Administration recommends approval on this.
Any discussion, item 13? We have a motion on item 13?
I move we approve item 13.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sais. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 14?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. San. Item 14, consider and take possible action on college and career success migrant student program for elementary schools.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President and respective members in the audience. Through the migrant program, we would like to offer College First, that will work in partnership with the Rio Grande City ISD, to offer the migrant students in elementary the opportunity to explore and succeed in their future college and career plans. Migrant students will be engaging in academic enrichment, hands-on activities, to cover the four endorsements that are now presently, five endorsements that are presently needed for House Bill 5. This is for elementary migrant students. I respectfully recommend and submit for board approval, and it will be funded through the migrant program.
Let me say this. I've had a chance to talk to Ms. Villarreal and Mr. Ernesto Villarreal. Could you please stand? So he's the representative of the company we're going to be doing business with, and I've gone over it, and I mean, it's pretty good that it, particularly the parent meetings, because I know that in the TEA report that we got, you know, one of the things it said that the parents are not aware of some of the things that are happening, and hopefully with this effort, that it's going to have four parent meetings for the second to fifth grade, and also four more for the middle schools, that'll give the parents an opportunity to learn more about the program. I think this program is very, very good. It involves different areas, including the SAM and the health professions and technology and engineering, and I welcome this for our students, and I, at this point, move for its approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action on college and career success migrant student program for secondary schools.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. College First will also be contracted to do the same activities, but of course, with different activities, because they're older students for the middle school students, and also, they will have migrant parent meetings, where the migrant parents will also learn the importance of completing a post-secondary education, explore the definition of college and career readiness by participating in interactive activities with their children. It is, I respectfully recommend and submit for board approval.
And it's the same thing, Mr. Chairman. I've gone over the program and discussed it with Villarreal, and I'm glad to say that this is going to be a good program for our migrants, so I recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 16, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between South Texas College and RGCC ISD Employability Skills.
SCC is proposing to train not only all CT staff, but all regular staff from the two high schools and the early college high school. The students will acquire a certificate after completing a total of 20 hours, and they must score an 80 in the program. The curriculum has been reviewed by the curriculum chairperson, Mr. Benito Sais. He viewed it. We had the SEC instructor dean come on over. There is no cost to the district. Last year, we got to pilot it, and we were successful, and this certificate may be reported to TEA in the Performance Effectiveness Report by the school district.
Any discussion, item 16?
No, again, this, I think is a good program, too.
We have a motion, item 16?
I saw a motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 17, consider and take possible action on renewal of Kurt's, Kurt's Wheel 3,000 Fire Flight Program. And thank you, Ms. Villarreal.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, and all that are present. At the present time, Speciality Department is seeking the approval of the Kurt's Wheel Program, which is a renewal.
Any discussion? We have a motion, item 17?
Will we approve item 17 as presented?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez.
I have a second.
And we have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basan. Anything on reports? And it is now 7:35. We'll enter closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. We're back in open session. Item A, do we have a motion, item A?
Will we approve item A as discussed in closed session?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
What is item B?
Oh, no, I think item...
Will we approve item B as discussed in closed session?
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Oh, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, that doesn't require any action?
Yeah, no action.
Item, item D, there's no action. Item E, discussion on possible action on superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of Vilma Garza, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for Good Cause, and authorize the superintendent to provide notice to the teachers as required by Texas Education Code, Section 21.15-A. Do we have a motion on item E?
I move to approve that motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sais. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have, all opposed. We have Mr. Klein and Mr. Gonzalez opposing the motion.
I abstain.
And Dr. Cantu is abstaining. Motion carries by majority of vote, by myself, Mr. Ramirez, and Ms. Solis, and Mr. Sais. Item F, do we have a motion, item F?
I saw a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the settlement agreement by Mr. Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sais. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, we have a motion, item G?
I move we approve the item as discussed in executive.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sais. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I saw a motion.
It is 9:39. We have a motion by Mr. Sais. Do we have a second?
Second.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.